I'm the ones that are on the.
I know.
I know.
You're also gonna go.
I know.
I like.
They hit me.
Now.
How do you come?
I went to.
Are you sure?
Two more yogas and.
He's sitting right in front of us, so I grabbed one.
He did say.
Are you gonna do that now?
I could bring it up. Make sure.
Try.
Work on and.
This is.
It is.
So here's this. You know, this one was a.
And then. Um. This collection is a question. It's everything. That was. Labor. So. I'm. Coming back. College.
Is it terrible?
Yeah.
Speak up, is that what you said?
Yes.
Well, they were behind you, you're talking, and that's why I can't hear very well.
Y'all, I don't know if y'all want to go in an order, maybe starting at this end or this end, and just work your way back, and let whoever wants to talk get up and talk, or what? Do y'all have a preference? Okay. Gandy, you wanna start or you go with?
I just think whoever wants to turn that up on.
Well, I was gonna do it by the road.
Okay.
That's not a good idea.
I mean, I don't have anything.
Can y'all speak up back here?
Why don't you go by your list? I mean, you're in charge of this council.
I don't have a list.
There is no list.
Well, we got. We got one written off, it's on your website.
No, that is an example of what you can talk about.
We just talked about. Just give them.
I'm Jo Dawn. I want to say thank you for the hard work y'all have been doing up here. I like that the agenda is long, because that means that those are things you're working on towards the future, and I understand that. This is government, then move slowly. But, I do have a complaint. The complaint is this. I didn't mind, I have two things, so remind me, I have two things. One, I didn't mind that you were spending money for the lawnmower yes, last night? The rotating, zero rotating lawnmower, and the one that goes off to the side.
The plow.
Yeah, but people out there don't know what that means, one that goes off to the side, so it don't get the ditches.
Ask. Ask, you don't know what it is, ask.
Well, that's right. Anyway, I'm glad you did it, that was a lot of money spent, we don't know how much, I wish you would've told us how much it was, but anyway, moving on. The one thing I was disgruntled with is that you spent fourteen hundred for her to go, the secretary to go to this convention, and I'm going to now display, hear me out, why? Is because Chamber of Commerce sent some people, but that was out of their monies, not the cities, to go to making the towns beautiful. And I think that's great, okay, I'm not complaining about that, but the one thing that they did come back and say is that it was really geared for cities that are over ten thousand population. With that in mind, this conference she's going to will probably be the same kind, and I think that when we need to get roads paved, we need to buy the oil for the roads, that conference money could've been spent for that. And that is when I say we needed to spend it there. I thank you for being, Mr. Morris, the only one who voted no, and Mayor, I know you don't have a vote on it, I'm just saying that for everybody's benefit. The rest, I wish that they would've have voted no, and I wish they would've voted yes for the oil, because that's the step to go.
We did.
We did vote yes for the oil.
We did vote yes for the oil.
You did?
Yes.
All right, well, all right, scratch that, thank you very much. The next thing is, I would like to make sure that, I was sitting in the back for the things that, wow, I would like to see that we all, you start posting how you spend the money. I think we have the right to know how the money's being spent, how much money's in the account, and yet today, we do not know any of it, nothing. And that's what we, the people campaigned on, and I wanna see that campaign.
Promised.
Promised. Thank you.
I believe the TML turn, was that about seventy?
Seventy-sixty.
How much?
Seventy-six hundred.
Seventy-six hundred, and then the plow was sixty?
Sixty-two. It won something.
Okay.
But I agree with you, we're going to start posting what we have in this department, and what's being spent in this department for what.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
If, when you vote on something, you know, you take bids and stuff, if you'd say, I make a motion, we accept blah, blah, blah for, and tell us how much, then we'd know. But you never do that, you just take that bid, you know, and, do I have a second? Also, I don't agree with the fourteen hundred dollars to go to the TML, and when you look at the ordinances, could you look at all the vacation days? I believe that our employees have more holiday vacation days, holidays, not vacation, more holidays than the bank and the post office. For a little town, I think that's ridiculous.
I really don't know how that came about, you know, the holidays they get, how many days off they get and all that, so we'd have to look in that, because I don't know how.
Well, when you do the ordinances, pay attention. When you do the ordinances, you need to look at stuff like that.
I'd be curious how first they match us to school, district council.
Yes, sir.
I was on the council and we set those, it was holidays and vacation, well, I don't know about the vacations, but the holidays. We coincide, we coincided our holidays with the bank's holidays. That's how that came about, because the city secretary couldn't conduct business at the bank's place. So, there was no need to pay somebody to be here, or business could not be conducted. That's how, that's how a lot of it came about. Now, I don't know about anything after I left, but I know that the bank and the city had to work hand in glove to make things work, so that's how we, we as the council at that time came about doing that. Now, we no longer have a bank here in town, so if you wanna re, you know, readdress that, I think that might be okay, but.
The bank is still closed?
But the post office, you know, you got business with the post office, that has to go hand in glove also, so.
I think it should be based on federal holidays.
And while I'm talking, I didn't mean to put you right there.
No, that's fine.
While I'm talking, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
I have a list of the suggestions that was put forth by the council in there, I applaud every one of those things that did. Now, of course, like everybody in this room, you know, if we, if we, what's the, fall into a barrel of, if we started pumping oil out here on the city square, we could do a lot of those things, but unfortunately, we're gonna have to take a little hard look at how the city can go about financing some of this stuff.
Well, our budget's coming up, and we're gonna take a real hard look.
Good. Do y'all meet with, let me ask you another question, do you meet with Texoma Council?
Teacog.
Regional.
Teacog?
Okay. When I was on council, we worked, we were close with the Texoma council.
Government.
Yeah. And they gave us insight as to what, what grants were out there.
Yeah.
They, they know the grants, and they sent guys up here, real nice guy, I forgot his name, I'm sorry, but I don't remember my name sometimes, but the guy was very helpful at giving us grants, very good, he knew the ins and outs of grants, and unless you have somebody that can steer you in that direction, and knows what's gonna be, not only what's, what's, what grants are available now, but what grants are gonna be available in the future, you have to know those, because time is of the essence of that stuff, time is your enemy only. They want you to, they want you to not know, so, and it may not be something that you want, it may not be streets, but, you know, it could be, I don't know, it could be like the handrails over here, or it could be a number of things, but.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, any, anything. Cleaning out ditches on the side of your streets, they have a lot of that kinda stuff, and it would be advantageous to the city to send a member, or, you know, have somebody go to the Texoma Council. Leon Hurst was big in it, he believed in it, and we got a lot of things done just, just by being in contact with him. I think that, I'm gonna shut up after this, but, but I think our city boys are doing a hell of a job, pardon the French, I think our police department's doing a good job, I think our trash people are doing a good job, some people may not agree with the trash, but here in town, people are doing, the trash people are doing a good job, and all in all, things are running fairly smooth, and I want to applaud this, this council, and putting out these kinda things for the community to see, to know that you really care, and. I'm gonna shut up.
Thank you. I was gonna tell you, a gentleman from KSA was here today, and he was telling me about some grants, and he, the people that is doing the housing here, I think their name.
Grant Works.
Yeah, Grant Works. Anyway, they told us to get in touch with Donna Johnson, and you know, she's got grants that are very little for us, you know, to have to pay back and all that, and they were telling us what we could use them for, and they don't have a particular date that you have to, our deadline that you would have to do, so we're going to get in touch with her too, and see. Yes, I know, Teacog also does that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I remember when Teacog gave a grant to put siding on a lot of these old wooden homes, and that was a free grant, and it really helped a lot of people. And so, Teacog is something that, you know, even if you don't go there, if you call once a week, or keep in touch with someone, Lester Loftus used to go up there, live there, I think, he got more grants than any mayor since I've been here, from Teacog.
Teacog's a very, very important key to structuring cities, that's what they do, and I know that they redid the housing project, they got people in to the housing projects up here and straightened it up, it was, it was terrible at one time, but now it really looks good, and they, they sent people up here and took it over, and did a good job on it.
They'll help with weatherization on houses too.
They can light bills now.
Oh?
Yes.
Man light bills ain't a bad thing.
I'll just say, Teacog will send the city all that information, so, you know, put flyers out, or try to get it out to the public too, and all that, like the weatherization, any type of, like electricity, helping with that, and try to get all that information out, so we can get those flyers out that they bring to us, because Teacog works real good with the city too, so, yeah, just keep on putting that information out to the public.
On Thursday, when I go to Sherman on Thursday, Teacog, they may tell me then, or tell us, the foster grandparent, that's what I work with at school, and that's Teacog, and they tell us what is available for each one individual, you know, so I find out something on Thursday, I can mount it on up.
Thank you. Who is over at Teacog? Did you not see it?
I'm not sure.
I think it was Stephanie.
It's a board.
Yeah.
It's a board.
They have different ones in each division.
Can I say something? I know I'll take everybody's. All right.
It's your deal.
With the situation, with the situation that the city's, with the future of this city, I've worked with the mayor of Faith for thirty years, and when Faith was a small, very small town, the Lake, Lakeway Hubbard, they were starting to annex in all these small communities, and he was mayor of Faith back then, he said the best thing that the city did was hire then a city manager. He said, a city, a good city manager will develop your town and do day-to-day operations that the council cannot afford at that kinda time. I know it's an expense, but he said that was money, in his opinion, that was money well spent, maybe this council can look, look hard at something like that and try to find an extra, extra money somewhere, and I know y'all talking, but keep on.
We will. Thank you. Yes, Senator.
I appreciate what y'all do with fixing the road and everything, but I was up here before that road was fixed, because, long as I've been there, I didn't know there was a sewage problem, and a water problem in the street, until my, Mr. Childress told my daughter, my granddaughter now resides in the house, so I came and talked to Dana, and told her that there was a problem, and I'm not taking anything from the city guys, I appreciate them, but those are young guys, and some things, they're not really educated to do, and like he said, get the city manager and get somebody in here, just go get this stuff straight, so you won't have to keep putting money on this stuff, because now that street, it's gonna cost two thousand dollars. I took Granny down there last night, and it's on the city, it's out in the middle of the street, some guy came today, I guess just gonna fix it on it, put those other pipes down, and I shouted to him, he said, well, ma'am, that's on the city, they're gonna put the water down, so they could finish digging and put, doing the drainage, and I recorded him saying that, but I don't have my phone with me, I don't have my daughter's phone with me, but I would just like to get everything fixed at once, so we won't keep spending money on the same thing. If we gonna get the money here, Dana told me that some guy had something that she's gonna get fixed that they.
What?
If it's fixed, it's on them, they should get it fixed, and it shouldn't be on the city, that's gonna save the city money. If you gonna put your money in something, make you investing in something that's gonna pay back, that's gonna pay when it's messed up, they should fix it, not on the city. I'm not taking nothing for the city, I'm for the city, but when things are wrong, it needs to be fixed and not have to keep doing it over, and that's all I'm asking, for that to be fixed, because their sewage is back up, and I thought, long time ago, and even Ms. Jan, that big smile, when I was in there talking to Dana, she was shaking her head at me, why was I aware of this? Why was I, I needed to be aware of something going on, but I remember a couple years ago, gas man come down and put lines in there, and put a flag right there in the middle of the street, I'm thinking, was it gas, now maybe it was sewage, maybe it was sewage, but I'm gonna call the gas man out again, and I would like for that to be fixed, the man came out there, he's gonna dig something, I don't wanna dig too much and blow us up, but I just want it fixed, I want, that needs to be fixed, thank you.
This is a sewage leak, amount of water.
It's gonna be sewage leak, why, because it's on the city, it's out in the middle of the street, it should've been fixed years ago, before I even found this problem out, somebody else didn't even tell me, they told somebody else, I found out because the Millers lived there, and if this problem was going on, it should've been fixed a long time ago, it should've been fixed a long time ago.
Is it sewer or water or both?
That man said, this is what he said, he said that sewage pipe that's running, it's running from the city out there in the streetway, all the way down there, so what problem is that, what problem is that?
Yeah, but we're asking, is it sewer or is it water?
It may be both, because, it may be both, because that water lays there, that water lays there, but he said it's running from, well, what is he, he said that sewage pipe thing is in the middle of the street, running all the way down there.
And I'm pretty sure Mill Street is clay.
I mean, some guy y'all heard on the subway screen, is all I know.
Isn't it backing up in your, in your home, right?
Well, no, because you gotta turn the water off, yes, we'll be, you can't do that. Yeah, yeah, I was shocked like that too, Jan, I mean, I was shocked like that too, when it was found out, somebody else had to tell me, sorry, Jan.
That's okay.
Sorry, I apologize, I was shocked, because I wasn't aware of this being going on for a long time.
Can the fire department flush some of those?
Well, that guy.
Through the manholes to clear out clogs?
The gentleman that came out to do the plumbing, I think attempted all of this, but they said that they couldn't find that, what's that thing in the?
Manhole?
It's a little hole.
Cleanout? Cleanout?
Yes, they couldn't get to it because it was so full, is what, I was, so I don't know where Dana went, but she could explain it better.
The guy that came out to Dan, just like I saw it from that, whatever them pipes, some sewage, y'all got running, it's running from right there all the way down there, some other street, so that, to me, I just need to get it fixed, if I have to help fix it, but I just feel like it's a city problem, and I wish I'd have known before even thought that happened.
Can you, can you run a camera down, and look at it?
Let me go get them, because she talked more with, making money.
Here, I'll go get it.
Well, see the street, let's hope they fix it, because that's what's wrong with your street. Doesn't work in the middle of the street, never.
Do you know about, Sam, would you repeat that?
Okay, I came down and talked to you and asked you about the guys coming out, maybe looking out for the water, that sewage, no, 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 that wasn't last week, no, ma'am, that was before they even started fixing on the road. Yes, I came down here, Jan was standing up, yeah, you sitting up in there, that was last week, that wasn't last week.
Yes, ma'am, that was last week.
No. Okay, I mean, our community, but I came here, talked to you before they even started fixing on that street, fixing on that street, I would put my hand on a barber and swam, that's the reason I'm here, because I was told that this was just now, been telling to you, but I told you before that road was, before they even started fixing on that road, and I refused to be, in my face, when I was there.
That was last week.
That was last week.
Yes, ma'am.
That was, no, I came here last week to talk to you about the man, about my housing, that's what I come to talk to you about, when you was talking to Jane. Yeah.
You also brought the sewage.
But I had been, but, I have been here before then.
Is there a work order?
The first work order we have is from when Delisa called, I'm sorry, actually, Delisa's plumber called, and needed the guys to come down there, and that was the Friday that the road was finished.
And I had been up here and talked to you about that, because I told you, Mr. Childress, I'm glad he told Dana, he told Dana that there was a problem when the Millers stayed there, right down the driveway, that was a problem, and somebody was aware of it, why wasn't I aware of it, this should've been fixed a long time ago, before even thought that, that's what I'm talking about, it should've been fixed.
Who are the Millers?
Uh, you know who the Millers are?
You're talking about them?
I'm talking about the same one that work at the sheriff's department, the same lady that work at the school, those Millers, they used to own the house.
Okay, I mean, how long?
Oh, I don't know, you need to ask them, but before they, before, after they had it, yes, it has, so that's to tell you how long the problem been going on, and I wasn't aware, but somebody else was aware, but people don't speak up, and I'm gonna speak up when I'm right, and nobody's gonna make me wrong, and nobody's gonna call me a liar when I come up here and did it, it's, all I need is fairness, because you get my money for water I don't even drink.
So, full of water, tap water, or sewage?
Sewer water.
Sewer water.
So where was sewer water coming?
From their house, from South South.
Not from the manager?
I wish I could get that guy, they had the date, he said that's the problem, he said it's running y'all, he put, I didn't put the X there, I wouldn't do it, I'm about doing the right thing, and I'm about being treated fair, that's all I'm about, I didn't put the X there, the problem was gonna cost two thousand dollars to get that fixed, and the guy told me today, he said the city gonna say it's yours when it's right here in the X, when it's just running all the way down there, I said, no, the city ain't, because I'm getting you on you.
Unfortunately, the sewer guys aren't here, but I can tell you that.
I'm, I'm gonna go get my family.
Every, there was an issue with the city's sewer name, everybody on that road.
I shall return with my evidence.
Everybody's.
Yeah, I understand, but if it's broken, the main going back to her, or her, where it feeds from her.
Right.
And it's still on the city.
Correct, so we didn't even find out about it until the Friday after Faith repaired the road, which is been on the road, not even, well, it's Tuesday, so it's been.
And that was here the morning they came in and discussed that?
Yeah, and of course, there's a question of where exactly is the break jar?
When she's been dead, is this just something that's made?
No. It has something, that is an expression.
Wait for it.
Well.
Somebody else live there.
Then I need the Millers to come in and justify that, because at this point in time, we have no complaints on that property for sewer backup, until that Friday when Herb Plumber called us, and according to the plumber, they called him on Monday, but no one contacted the city, because the first thing the city does is actually drive the truck to us, we haven't, Herb come out and jumped the line.
But didn't they say, what, what?
They don't know, you won't know until you do that.
Saying, also, there'd be work orders on anything that was reported in that area, so go back and look at the work orders, work codes on everything.
They have to keep them for two, three years.
Yes, so if there was anything reported, it'd be, and there should be a work. I don't remember.
Anybody else complaining about that?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to see these old abandoned houses torn down. And the lots, bringing that, the grass is over the, sometimes over the top of the house, and you can barely see, the ditches are all grown up. And they're just, that's what I'd like to see.
So they're abandoned houses?
Yes.
The loans of the individuals still?
And if they pay any taxes or not?
And we were, Dana was telling me that there's Lark's, is it Lark's or something?
Leiberg.
Leiberg.
Leiberg, anyway, that they're looking into seeing which ones can be legally put on the steps, I think of the sheriffs to, yes, yes.
Sheriff's sale.
It has to go through them first?
Church Street, just go all over different hands, go all over.
Oh, I realize that, I drive a school bus and I see all of them, you know?
Four block area, there's three or four.
I can change the light, change the battery, change everything.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, layers have been sent to certain lines and I'm sure there needs to be a holdup on those letters, you know, what the next step is, so I would recommend looking at those, see where that's at, and maybe taking the next step on those.
Would that company that Dana's talking about, would they be aware of any?
What?
Are they the one that do the, uh, Jane was saying that it would be good to have a lot of letters sent out to the houses that were...
No, no, what I said is, we have already addressed some of the properties and their issues.
That's right.
There maybe need to be, the next step might need to be.
The one over by the side, or, church, is it? Is her house, anyway?
Uh, would y'all please not be talking back there?
I'm sorry.
This is the name when we did.
What does it matter where the old one? Did you get enough from me too?
The other one, um, like Miss Dolls, can sign it, that Dolls, can sign it, because they're not in the city. But they use that road here, in this one, so they can sign it.
Do I need to redo the ones that I got? Do I need to redo the ones I got? I took one to the side already and I got...
So we'll take one of those.
Is there anybody else that wants to, yes, ma'am, for sure.
I live on Taylor Street. My house faces Taylor Street, I live right behind Rita. And I just wanted to speak to the fact that it definitely is a thoroughfare.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we all in this whole room probably realize that there's that little gap between Eastside Grocery or Fifty Ends and where 64 is. And I live in the little blue house right behind Rita, that faces Taylor Street. It, we have to power wash our house like four times a year. It kills our plants.
And I love your plants.
Well, thank you very much, but we have to come out there and we have to spray them off because they breathe through the leaves and I, you know, that's our church. That's church to us, is going outside and being in nature and, you know, gardening. And so with the, having to go up and down with the grader every couple of weeks, all the gas, his time, all the main thoroughfare, because our city's growing, that's gonna be a fact. We have Dollar Store going in. The main thoroughfare coming into town is 34, and 34 is a highway, and this will be a highway. So that's what we're discussing is, you know, do we wanna keep staying here whenever our, our, uh, front yard is a very short distance to the side of the road there? We have diesels barreling through all day, dump trucks, box trucks from Eastside that goes down.
And they don't even stop at the stop signs.
I mean, we've seen, we've seen horrendous, almost accidents all the time, you know? Anyway, I think we all understand that that little section, it's gravel. If you have a just washed car, I dare you. You live at my house and you wash your car, I dare you. And so, you know, I think we all collectively need to make sure that we agree and we sign this petition, that this is something that's long overdue. My grandfather lived in that house and he talked about it to us. My father lived there after him and now it's gonna pass to me, and so, you know, it's just been a long problem. If y'all traveled the road, you know.
It's that way, it's that way down on Church Street, Fourth Street, Ork's. Not paved in here. Look at my car out there.
Just saying.
Is, is that spree, does it belong to the city or county?
City.
I'm sorry?
City.
It was a one-car road. They graded it, filled in the ditches, and it keeps getting wider and wider. If it went back to a one-lane road, these big trucks might not use it so much.
Well, if somebody come down there and write tickets, they would be...
Yeah, that's one of the things I wanted to say too. They could stand there and write tickets, they paid for the pavement on that road.
Well, what happened is years ago, like I said, it's a one-way street, but then they found out they could come straight from Commerce down there and go up 50 to Honey Grove, instead of coming through town, and that's what they're doing.
Yep, but the big trucks from a fraternity are using that road. That's why we're asking the fraternity pay.
Yeah, but that's the reason why they're doing it.
Right, because it's a straight.
They're not supposed to be using it anyway, not to make trouble.
But they are.
Well, it says, the trucks, the law was out there to take care of it.
We, I'm gonna say something too. I love my son down at Eastside, but he has been telling, and this has been going since he's been down there. He's been telling any trucks that stop there and ask that they can come on down that road. And that says no trucks, no trucks on each end. And the one on my end continually gets knocked over. Me and him set it back up, because the hole's still there, but they'll get knocked over. So we go and we set it back up. But anyway, we have a couple of people in town that, down there at the store that says, "Come on down, now you can go down there," you know? Okay.
Yeah, as far as my situation, you see, get this here fixed, this sewer's fixed, because eventually, if they say the city, y'all be wanting to condemn my house. Then with my granddaughter, yeah, it'll get ready, because how can she use it if the water's there? You be wanting to condemn my house, why you gonna condemn my property when you're beginning to fix it? And this is my problem, like I said. I bought my evidence, y'all would like to hear it, with that guy that y'all got, with them things, and if you would like to hear it, I'd be more than welcome to give it to you. Would you like to hear it or not?
Yes, ma'am. Are you putting it on speaker?
I don't care. No, that's, no, that's the X. So you said this sewer's been the Miller's running from down in...
I bet so, I bet it's serving right now, it's been down the middle of the road.
And I'm asking you, I need a pay, if you see a guy named Mr. Dritman, about six years ago, I paid him out of my pocket, because I was willing to pay for this, $400, didn't even have to pay. But you know what? I got my money back. My daughter's still... Don't make, don't make close to him. You go, you got this money, I mean, you got all that, you got this, but I'm going down there. I'm going down there. That's your one, that's what you're going to dig out there.
Dana will be here tomorrow, worried about him.
Hey, hey.
Hard, hard.
Can you suck some right here, maybe you digging a bit right here?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, so be back in here. But do you need to put some water right down where the, the line is? But where is that line at? It's in my yard, it's in the road. Okay, is that near the city? Now, that's my property, but is this the city?
I know, but that's why they say that right away over there, you know what I mean? They say they got a right of way.
What is that, we brought it with?
Up to the pole, but then they don't let you build nothing, it's your property, but they don't let you dig it.
That's my property over there, where this line is, industry name.
Your property's all that.
No, they, this is the city.
Well, they take it back and they say it's the road right of way and the power right right of way, you know what I mean?
But wait, is it, is it, is it, is it the street moving on? The hood is, wait, it's that industry now.
I really think at a meeting, I heard her talk about it at the meeting, before the road was, several months before, at the meeting, I really do believe I heard that. At the, you know, when you sign the papers and stuff, I really thought I heard her say that.
She has talked the three minutes about water, standing water, and it's gotta be coming from the sewer. But of course, your three minutes, no one acknowledges what you say.
I've heard her speak about it, yes.
Where, uh, when do you think y'all heard it, heard it on?
Months ago, months.
Months ago?
She did it like three months in a row, I know.
Yeah.
We will, or I will try to find what, what you're speaking of.
Thank you for the fact you...
Rita, Rita heard it too.
It was like the first meeting that they took over?
No, it goes back further.
Because he was filming. He didn't start.
But I applaud that.
But maybe she said...
One, she's complaining about it.
Is there water changing?
I think they get it mixed up with...
No.
She's complaining about the holes in the road.
The man was digging.
Sometimes it wasn't the holes in the road, it was just the water, you know, and then back to the holes.
I mean, that's, that's, that's not helping, that's not helping. That's a health hazard. Delisa didn't know, that's my granddaughter, she didn't know. She just moved it, just like I said. I called it all this time and didn't know it, until Mr. Childress told Dana.
Okay, I reached out to Mr. Miller to ask him if there was, if there was sewer backup. Y'all were saying that, because he, he knew there was something, but if he didn't...
Mr. Childress said, but I have to get my paperwork to show you from the last guy that owned it. Okay, he lives down on Church Street now, and I have to get my paperwork and I'll show you from there. I can show you that.
But again, if no one has contacted the city up until that, that Friday that the plumber...
But I'm telling you, I contacted you before the Friday, and you not gonna sit in my face and call me no luck. I didn't text you, I'm talking to you.
I just saw what you just said, you texted me.
No, I didn't say text, I talked to you, I to I.
So the point is, if there's a problem, just fix it. It doesn't matter when she said it, it just needs to be fixed. And, and still arguing about when she said it, just say, okay, we're gonna fix it.
If it's a city problem, then the city should take care of it. If it's a customer problem, then the customer should take care of it.
The problem, uh, the problem is that the plumber that was here the first, that Monday?
That Friday.
That Friday, he said it was not the city's problem, it was the other, the customer's problem. So I guess that's what we're trying to decipher, because he was supposed to come back in, uh, in a couple of days, didn't he say, and do it? Uh, so we, I agree, it has to be done, you know?
He's not gonna come back until they get the okay to go out to where that is. He's not gonna come back, he's not gonna come back because, just like the guys were doing, they were defending what the city had done, what they had done fixing that road. And they, they wasn't gonna tear up that road, because they could get him in trouble, and I understand that, holy. I understand that, they were doing what they were told, the young men were doing what they were told. But at, at the end of the day, the job still needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've got a question, because this leads to a bigger, I think, systemic issue. So, we're doing roads, we've got sewer problems, is there some way to, to get these in the proper order? Make sure you don't pave the road over a sewer problem? I don't know when the sewer was last done, I hear a lot about the clay pipe and stuff. And I know over the years, there's been, you know, going and fixing the little things. Do you have a plan to go look at it from a system level and determine what water's good, what sewer's good? Because if you go pave the roads, you're gonna be in this problem by the time you turn around.
I understand what you're saying, the problem was, uh, I was told that we found out, I was there when it happened, and it was just after the road had been paved. Yes, we wished we had found out before the road had been paved, but you have to, you know, things happen. So we're, we're just gonna have to figure out how and who is gonna fix it. And, uh, I was told today that, and our, our guys are gonna be the ones. Okay, I, I was under the impression our guys were gonna be the ones that were going to, um, find where it's at, you know? I wish this had never happened, I'm sure you wouldn't have it ever had happened. But, you know, the, uh, yes, I would not want to be living in a house like you're living in at the moment. So I understand where you're coming from, and, uh, we're just gonna have to work together to get this problem solved. I agree.
My question was, how are you gonna avoid it in the future?
I have no earthly idea.
Well, the thing is, we got a grant to do the road.
A long time ago.
Okay. Now, in saying that, maybe we should've got a grant to do the sewer lines. But, but, but that didn't happen, so, you know, we, we know we have outdated stuff all over and it needs to be repaired, and if you, if you pave over it, then you're gonna dig it up.
And on that particular road, the water lines, the water lines weren't done. And that's why we, that's why for so long we get the roads done. But the sewer lines were not addressed at that time, that I'm aware of. But the water lines did get redone, Andrew, you're...
Yeah, but I know other parts have been done, but who's looking at it from the big picture? If you start moving ahead, because you can spend a lot of money going back and forth here.
You can fix what you don't know.
Well, I think it would be an easy solution just to survey, so, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna repave a road, go door to door and ask questions, you got sewer problems, you got water problems, just find out slowly. I think the other thing is, I noticed that there's a, the width of the paving on Mill Street goes from 15 feet to 17 feet, 18 feet, 19 feet. So did they, did they pave correctly, did they overpay? So did they, did they pave correctly? Did they overpay onto utility access to go there?
Well, they're saying utility access is in the middle of the road.
Sewer access is on every road.
So were there manholes on Mill Street? I know, but I, I, uh, walking, it's not Sunday, I didn't notice it. But I've been wondering more.
I don't know. They text us when they come to Joe Mason, they come to manholes, they don't, they don't stop.
There is a manhole on Mill Street. Because that was when I had a problem with that water line.
Can't hear you, Russell.
All right, get out there and make answers, just ask. No residents are aware of any water or any sewer issues.
Learn from your spikes.
I think hindsight is twenty twenty.
Well, when they fix streets like that, to do something in the street, they need to fix the street instead of leaving Church Street. Every bump that's in Church Street is done because the city did something in the middle of the street and never fixed it.
Every street that I know in this county, if y'all can tell me which street is, is the best street, I would love to know which one it is.
Mill Street.
Mill Street rather.
And everybody come out. But what I'm saying though is when they do something in the street, they need to turn it back the way it was instead of leaving big bumps and big bitches in it.
They're not leveling it out after they do.
Put it back the way it was.
Right.
Well, this is there.
The elephant in the room? Are you ready for the elephant?
Are you saying you're the elephant?
No, I'm sorry, just don't point out what the problems are.
Okay, thank you.
M O N E Y. Now, with that being said, with that being said, you won't go out here and buy a car and pay cash for it, did you? No, those people can't. I think the city needs to consider a bond, a, a, a bond. And designate which street you want. Don't do them all. Because I'm on fixed income and a lot of other people in this little town don't, are not rich. But without a bond package or structured bond, you're never gonna get these streets fixed. Never, 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 never.
You know, I had wondered about that because I noticed Bonham had, uh, a bond. Yeah, but I think it tied. I don't know if they ever broke the tie or not. Do you know, Sheriff?
What, what, what is it? The city bond?
Yeah, remember when we just had our election, they had, uh, there was a bond issue and I had nev- I'd never seen one that was tied the same numbers. So I don't know if they ever did a runoff or not.
They, if they.
That was school, school.
That was a school, they had to resubmit them to do it over. We had a bond, we had to, we had to get a bond when our water system went out. We didn't have enough, city didn't have enough money. So we had, we put it before the, we put it on the ballot, put it before the people. Bond was passed, we were able to get our, our water system back up and running. And like I say, this town will never, never have a, never have any kind of improvement unless you actually go out, get a bond, pay it out, and then, and then aggressively move to where you need to go. Don't bite off more than you can chew on the bond. I know that there's a limit on, we'll have to talk to somebody about bonds. But I think there's a minimum and a maximum. So, anyway, there's two cents.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other, uh, comments?
Cleaning up the city, tearing down some of these abandoned houses that are dangerous.
I've got that on my list.
Number one, make the city look better.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Even with terrible roads, if it looks clean, that's a start.
Agreed. Yes, sir?
Yeah, um, I'm here at just, uh, four wheelers coming down from, uh, people always down to ten, a million, thirty-four. They come through that speed, don't slow down, you know, this is country. It's their keys, their brandy, that's, yeah, that's it. They come to, I mean, he can be doing. Life, whatever, it doesn't matter. He comes to Asia at night, no light, no nothing, get wide open. I wanna know why. Ain't nothing to encounter. They got the safety hazard. Then they can hit the road. They can run away anybody, they ready, right?
Uh, I believe, I believe else I was talking to today, but, uh, we were almost hit by a, a four wheeler, a blue one. And the gentleman was running, well, he could split, never hit him, he was crossing the, across the street or nothing, never looked. You know, I guess they think they had the right of way.
Well, that's what our police need to be doing.
They come down Church Street. And they turn onto Fourth Street and we expect to see some child laying out the road because they may have unborn kids in there.
No, I agree.
And they make that sharp turn. And I expect some even to have that, be a child.
I have asked, uh, the chief to, uh, meet with everyone that has the four wheelers, three wheelers, whatever, and, uh, tell everybody what the rules are. I know, uh, he said that he has, at one time or another, has talked to everyone, you know? But, do what?
It doesn't do any good just to talk to them.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but there's so many different rules that they say that they were told they could go by. You know, I can do egg, or I can, uh, uh, Honey Grove lets, lets them do it. And, you know, I've seen them do it in commerce.
Why give them a ticket?
I can't give them a ticket. I wished I could, you know? Cause I just, I, I fear, especially when I see these children out there on it with other little children. I, I, it makes me wonder, what are these parents thinking? Are they throwing away kids? You know? Um, so, uh, we need to do something about them.
They came down the Church Street the other day, had a trailer behind it, had six kids in it. But they turned around onto Fourth Street, which is right in front of my house. I expect I'll see a turn over and the kids be out. But there's four of them.
So they say they never be down, they never be down like four wheelers, just running, grabbing them down a feet?
There's, there's.
Well, talk to us, Dan.
What can be done?
Why can't, I don't know why.
Well, we've done, um, we have written tickets. We have impounded ATVs. We have talked with the parents. We've talked about the safety stuff. We've talked about all of the rumors that are out there. What we're told when we stop is that, oh, we were told by a constable, or we were told by a deputy, or we were told by another officer that we can drive it on farm-to-market roads and county roads, but we can't be on a state highway. So rather than, nobody likes the ticket, right? Nobody here's got disposable income, right? So the last ticket, I forget how many hundreds of dollars it cost to impound and tickets to the owner of that ATV. And he had his thirteen-year-old son, twelve-year-old son sitting on those handlebars, just like you're talking about. So we got the tickets for that, and we got the impound for the ATV, okay? We try and educate, right? We try and educate about what the law is. Cause if you misunderstand it, you believe you are in the right, you're gonna fight for it, right? Until you find out that when you open up the law book, no, you can't do all of those things that somebody told you incorrectly. So rather than trying to take money out of people's pockets because nobody's got disposable income, we try and educate. We try and talk about the safety. And then when we have no other options left, we write the tickets and we seize the ATV. Just yesterday, through our Facebook page, we got notification of somebody out here in Paris. And luckily, we were in town, we got right over there, and we found a father catching his twelve-year-old son operating the ATV without permission. Okay? So father's coming home from work, he sees his kid out in the ATV, parks his car, goes and gets him, brings him back, and that's when I show up. So, do we take money out of dad's pocket? Maybe. Or do we let the parent deal with the child and maybe save a life? I don't know. Folks, I, I don't know. But we spent a year, we spent a year visiting every single person we found riding an ATV. We spent a year trying to educate, trying to dispel all of the rumors, tell them what the law is, tell them why the law is. We had an ATV just last week crash into a gas main. We got really, really lucky. Because it broke the main on this side of the meter. Not on the house side, on the feed side. And raw gas, natural gas pouring out. Why? Because somebody wants to fly down the high, uh, fly down the street at forty miles an hour and lost control, and bam, they hit the gas meter. We know who it is, right? But by the time the call comes in and we get there, where's the ATV? Well, it's in the garage. Can we arrest him on a gas, Sheriff? We can't write him a ticket on, well, I think you were operating this. We have to see the offense. So, we're trying, folks, because quite honestly, I'm not only a parent, but I'm a grandparent. And we already had one bad accident last year right out here with an ATV, and the kid came over the handlebars and right onto the pavement. And by the time first responders got here, they had scooped up and taken off, and nobody would tell us anything. That kid ended up in the hospital.
So do you need us as people out here to take pictures and turn them to you?
Now, look, again, and the sheriff's here too. So we've got, we have two law enforcement, three, because there's another officer in the room. We have to witness the offense.
You have to.
With the law enforcement officer, before I issue a citation, we have to witness it. I can't take a third party. Cause maybe you don't like her. And you call me and tell me she's out riding ATV, and then I go write her a ticket and she was never on her ATV. So we can't take third-hand information. But what I can do is identify the owner, and we've done that numerous times. Gone to them and said, hey, look, this ATV with you and that child running down Church Street, or whatever. Here's the law, here's the penalties, and it's expensive. It's expensive. It's hundreds of dollars. Am I court, Dana?
I disagree with you on what you're saying. And the reason why I do is because I have cameras all over my house. And the guy who came up there and stole was right on the cameras and.
Different. That's different.
That's different. Why can't we take pictures and turn them in?
You can. We just can't act on that through the transportation. We can't do that third party. Remember the traffic cameras? Remember that all got outlawed? There's a reason for that. A law enforcement officer didn't observe the offense at the time it occurred, right? So, yes, send us that information. And extending this now to Taylor Street. We've written tickets. We've turned, we've made trucks turn around and go the other way. And thanks to Ms. Rita and her videos on Facebook, we were able to identify one of the companies that was violating the no-truck thing. I contacted the safety director of the company. They went all the way to chain command to the vice president. We got a letter saying, this will never happen again. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. So it's not just tickets, it's not just law enforcement presence. There's other ways we can address these issues. So if we can't be there every day, and we can't, right? We can't be in that intersection every single day to stop all of the trucks going up and down. We can enforce it when we're there, but when we're not, your participation, you see something, you say something, you send us the information, we can act on that. So, can I write that commercial motor vehicle driver a ticket for driving down that road? No. But guess what? Now, his safety director and his president of his company, Douglas Distributing, by the way, knows there was a violation. And we've done the same with Flatiron, we've done the same with Granite Construction, we've done the same with the others. So please keep sending us that information, and we will use that to try and address these issues as best we can.
I'm gonna answer your question now. What you do with the father, the twelve-year-old? Well, the father sounds like he was gonna take care of the situation.
Yeah, he was gonna take care of business.
That, that needed, that, then that was okay to let him do it.
Absolutely. All right, hope that helps.
Any other questions or are you guys statements?
I just wanted to say that, um, about what he's talking about, uh, there's one trucking company that comes down Taylor Street, MC Trailers, and it's out of Wytham, Texas. They come at least once a day, if not.
Really?
And they have.
Cause we've stopped them before.
Tons of trailers, tons of trailers.
I had a county sheriff go to MC Trailers because I've called him so much, and they said, ma'am, we're gonna go out there. They went out there and they approached the guy that was the manager of this, and they told him not do it.
And they're still doing it?
Yeah.
You got it?
It's.
That helps.
Slow down.
He's got contractors that haul his trailers for him. He, I mean, yes, he can contact the, the contractors and say, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this. But, you know.
Yeah, he just went out there one day. He said, ma'am, I'm so sorry. And he went out there one day. I didn't, I don't, you know, I remember he spoke to everybody, made a general announcement, but if he has contractors.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know him personally.
Yeah.
And I, he, he has contractors that haul all his trailers. He hauls no trailers himself. But there, I mean, it's, it's no different. I mean, he should be contacting them and hopefully things change.
But I really do believe, I'm not in my hearts of hearts, that Upper Trinity needs to pave that Taylor Street because it's gonna be over a year more, about a year and a half, before the job's done, and they're bringing up.
It's gonna be longer than that.
Well, that's what I was told, okay? But I'm just, and they, they need, their trucks are destroying the roads. And it's not just that. We see potholes down here too that need, that are on Thirty-four and all that. But we're gonna have to address that with the, the state. But I really, with hearts of hearts, they, they need to pave that road. And it go a long ways for good feelings. Cause feelings aren't that good with Upper Trinity.
With paving the road, though, the truck situation.
No, you don't like what I'm saying.
We're just gonna have a, a small city street become a major, well, major fair now. But see, it's an entrance into town from, you know, Fifty, and that's all, Hunt County, you know, that way. And then the, you know, Thirty-four is an entrance into town going back that way in Hunt County. So, and then we got, you know, it goes all the way to Honey Grove, you know? So we've got paved highways, you know, there are entrances into town, but, you know, Fifty becomes Taylor Street. It's an unusual situation, I know.
Any other statements?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hello, I'm just here about the water system of three hundred milliliters.
Okay.
I talked to the guys and for me to see if y'all can dig it. I talked to my plumber and he was seeing for me to see, um, if y'all can dig it or, um, so I was just in question about that.
This is my granddaughter. Okay, she's the one that the plumber, she said the plumber said he hadn't talked to anybody.
I just wanna see who he spoke with.
Okay, uh.
But they're gonna take her.
Yes, we hope to get things settled because nobody needs to live that way, huh?
What's a hope? What, cause it's been like, like, so what's I'm saying, like, what's the, the hope for the, I would wait until like, when the backhoe, do I need to get something? That's what I'm saying, like, what's the next steps?
I guess the next step, we need to talk to, uh, the guys.
We started that Friday before July fourteenth, and our school starts back in about like three to four weeks. And I have an eleven-year-old, so.
We will just have to get together, uh, I guess, uh, the city and the, uh, the city workers and just come together and see what is the best thing that we. that we can do in this situation.
Okay, I have a question. You said you and the city workers, and that wouldn't you need the plumber that's gonna do the job also being connected with y'all so y'all know what's going on? Wouldn't the plumber need to be in with y'all?
Roader, router, someone else?
If the guys end up digging it up, they can replace the base.
Okay, yes, so that's just fine. It's like, when, like, 'cause we can, like, it can be paid for, like, that's just gonna, is when can the digging process start? 'Cause right now, it's going like on the outside of the house, so...
Right now, we don't have our, uh, our excavator. I don't know how long we will have the one that we've got, and I don't know, I think the guys are working on thirty-four now for Dollar General, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll...
Okay, I can understand Dollar General.
Yeah.
I see, I can understand the Dollar General. We're talking about somebody's house.
Oh, no, I know what you're talking about, haven't it?
Hey, the, the project for Dollar General, we had to go through text dot to get this, and this started well before we were aware of the sewer issue on Mill Street. And it, because part of, as y'all know, part of probably thirty-four, their bond street has to be closed down. We only have a limited timeframe with text dot to get that done. We have the approval dates.
Okay, so do I need to try to...
But honey...
Build the city?
Wait a minute. Can I explain something? When Leon Hurst was here, Leon Hurst, the famous Leon Hurst, Big Farley had the same problem they're having right now. I was the city carrier here. I got that stuff in my bloodstream, okay? If it wasn't for Peggy Franklin, I would've never made this route. I had it in my bloodstream. That's why we got a city vehicle now, because I was, I went to the hospital, I don't know if y'all remember that.
Oh, yeah.
If Sid was here, his wife was my nurse. I was throwing it, if that, if their kid walks outside, I swear to God, I'm not making this up, bare feet and has a scratch or anything, that stuff can get in his bloodstream. Sweetie, I'm sell, I'm telling you, it's, it's not a fun thing. Okay, then I... That's why I'm saying, maybe we can stop it for one day and just dig a hole so the plumber can finish it. For the family.
So it's not something that I live...
Correct. If it's, if it's on the connection side, it's home, right?
Correct, that is the first step.
If it's on the sewer main side, we should have backups and other, from other reservations.
But to be honest, this happened years ago, 'cause several families have moved in and out of the house without access to the water, because nobody would pipe for it long enough.
Water or sewer?
So they say that the city didn't know about it. You may not have known about it, but the city knew about it prior to, even when the Millers lived there, they had it, they found it, that it was under the, under the road, under the driveway, even back then. So now, somebody wants to live in the house and wants to be able to pay a water bill so that there's income to the city, but you can't, because nobody's wanting to, to do the work.
Is it water or sewer? Because the issue that, that was brought up...
Were you the mayor?
She's the one that the mayor asks the questions of, get the right answers. Unless you go...
No, ma'am, I'm fine. I apologize.
Okay, um, what is the, is, is your name Delisha or...
Delisa.
Delisa?
Delisa.
Delisa, okay. Could you come down to City Hall tomorrow morning? I'll be down there and discuss how best to get this solved.
I work eight AM to five PM.
What time do you go to lunch? You can't stay to go to lunch.
I can come to lunch, I can come at twelve. That's my lunch. I can take a lunch at twelve.
Okay, I will be down there, and I, we, we will discuss it. In the meantime, I can talk to the, the guys that's doing, uh, our water right now and see what we can possibly do. I agree, it has to be done. Um, I wish we had our excavator, but we don't. So we're, we looked everywhere and finally, uh, in this Patterson's... The excavator they're using. Okay, uh, okay, so we will have to see what we can possibly do to rid this, uh, problem. Yes, sir?
Could I make a comment? I'm kinda off track here, but when they're working down here, they're parking their equipment and the fire department block, blocking all three bays, the fire department.
That's illegal.
Two days in a row. There's lots parking.
Well, speaking of the fire department, I wish they would come and, and give us information what they're doing, and they're not doing it.
Patterson's working on Monster, when they're working down at Dollar General, and the fire department, and the driveway, blocking all three bays.
Chief Stark, Fire Chief, Chief Stark, see if he was even aware of it.
Do you have a new joke, Kathy?
He has a new joke, Kathy.
Is there any more, uh, discussion?
I have one more thing.
Yes?
I've been sitting here listening, and it's all very valid, very useful information, and I've enjoyed listening to all of that. But my concern was, and I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, what are you gonna do about cleaning up the cities and getting rid of abandoned houses?
We got a lot of legal issues.
Yes, and Dana and I have been discussing that, uh, we sorta have our hands tied at the moment, but we're going to try to, uh, do this, because I agree with everybody. Back when I was on the council, I, I wished that we could've gotten rid of these houses. They're an eyesore, and if they're wanting people to move in, our businesses, why would you move in if you, uh, drive down the street and see all these eyesores? You know, so we need to be working on that. Thank you.
There are processes you have to go through. You can't just go carry somebody's house down.
Oh, I understand that.
You know, and, I mean, some people think, well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix that, you know? Sometimes it never happens.
I understand that.
And it is kind of an ongoing thing, but, you know, the legal process is the main thing.
Any other discussions?
I'd like to thank the city council for making it possible, for being willing to have a, uh, a town hall meeting. I think we should do it again sometime.
That's what I was gonna ask, would y'all be interested in doing this again?
Yes. And you're moving positive. You're moving, doing the right thing.
What, like, maybe every two months or even every month? How would y'all like to do it?
Quarter.
Quarter, three months?
That's funny, 'cause you have lots of information now, that you can talk about the issues that, that the city needs. There is process for all of us, it takes time, you know? Hopefully, we can understand that, because these things do take time, and, and our, your muscles need to be able to see progress, and, and on the agenda.
I hope so.
I wanna say that I, I, I talked a lot to the, uh, people who are do, who do the trash. They were, I'm in the last house, so they would turn in my driveway, well, they busted my concrete driveway. And I called them, I called the trash people over and over, to have them stop turning in my driveway, because they weigh a lot, y'all. And, um, anyway, they got a new crew, and they've been excellent. I wanna put that on, that they really have gone out of their way to go down and turn around and not my driveway.
Oh, they are, they're excellent guys.
They, they've done, they are very helpful, they've been very polite, they've been, you know, just great. So I'm really happy with the new crew they got.
And they put the trash cans back, so they don't go out in the street.
Yeah.
And, uh, you tell them this, tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I tell them as much as I can how much I appreciate them.
Yep.
All right, any other comments?
Give me a card.
You wanna make a motion? Okay, uh, uh, within, we will try to set up another one in three months, and you'll be over here tomorrow at noon. Okay, thank y'all. I appreciate everybody, you know?
Thank you.